Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the board at tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 27, 2024, here in the boardroom. Can we have a roll call, please, Shannon?
Kendra Austin.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Jaclyn Gremler.
Here.
Nubs Ashford.
Yeah.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Linda Yingli.
Here.
Tom Grohl.
Here.
Chad Krueger.
Here.
Could you please join me and face the flag? If you're going to be proud to believe. Proud to believe.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest levels of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all of the members. Thank you.
First on our agenda is our public comment section, public comments to the board. Fifteen minutes, or up to fifteen minutes in three-minute increments. I did not have any sheets turned in to him. All right. Hearing none, we'll move right on to our recognition. Tonight, the board would like to recognize the high school girls bowling team for becoming Division II state champions. Not sure if they all could make it tonight. Hopefully, they could, but the team members are Marley Krueger, Bellicotti, Avery Frisch, Peyton Smith, Izzy Scheffler, and Jayden Delinger. I believe they're coached by Missy Fisher and Brad Krueger. So, board would like to recognize and congratulate all of you on a job well done. Did we decide who would like to talk a little bit about how things went at State and some of the experience?
Um, I think it was just overall, just sort of like great experience for all of us. It was our, all of our first times making it to State, just in general. So, first year having a girls' team, so that was really cool. Um, it's just a crazy experience, though. Like, Pat Merrill doesn't even really have a bowling team, so to say it like this is just...
One of the best kept secrets, right?
Yeah.
Now, tell us a little bit about team motto this year. That was pretty cool and how that came into play at State.
Yeah, our motto definitely was everything matters. We won by two pins total over seventeen games over our last team. It was crazy.
Really cool. Anything you other ladies would like to add?
Awful.
No, it was excellent. And just hearing everybody congratulate you and see what was going on, it's really a big deal. So, congratulations again to all of you. And like I said, the board would like to recognize you tonight for that and keep up the good work. I noticed a lot of underclassmen on the team, so you set the bar pretty high, did you not? So, congratulations, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Congratulations.
Thank you.
See you a couple weeks. Yep. While we're getting everything adjusted, I guess at this time, we will introduce our new board graphs with their report. And we've got no particular order, Brooke Dye and Max Black, so turn it over to you two to see who wants to go first.
August.
August.
Starting this week, NHS has started selling their Easter themed cookies, which are freshly made from our amazing kitchen set, which also might be known as Nancy's cookies. This is a fundraiser our students have put together to help raise money for future trips and events when it's up. Our students have come up with a creative idea to hide a golden ticket in each one of the trays of cookies. If a student gets the cookie with the golden ticket, they receive one free cookie. This is a fun way to get students to buy new cookies in the middle of the school day. And although spring break and this past week has not really looked like it, our school, our spring sports have started practicing in preparation for their season. Our athletes are eager to see what is in store for them this coming season. And then, not last week, but the week before spring break, our students were taking their ACT, where they had their freshman boot camp skills put to the test. Everything went smoothly and successfully. Now, they'll wait a few weeks to receive their scores. While a stressful day for the juniors, the rest of the MHS school had day off and they just got to rest before the beginning of spring break. From May 7 through the 14th, students registering for AP tests will take their finals, which include government, US government and politics, AP Chem, AP Human Geography, AP Statistics, AP Literature and Composition, AP Language and Composition, and AP Psychology, and AP Psychology. It is a very important thing for the teachers, but they have done an amazing job to prep their students to take these tests.
Um, the theater has been really hard at work getting ready for this year's musical, Matilda. Uh, the choir pit actors and stage crew are tirelessly practicing to have it ready for the 24th through the 27th, when they'll be performing for the community. And a middle school, middle schooler cadence studying is actually the lead for the playing. So, I think that's a good example of the involvement in the theater department. And like Brooke said, the boys and girls track team has been training and there's the first meet tomorrow. So, it's a Merrill Invitational, which means it's going to be right here at the high school. Track started practicing on the 4th of this month, and already the team is really bonded. So, I think we're going to perform well and have a great start to our season. And students in advanced culinary have an exciting event coming up called Food Truck Wars. It's a competition where teams cook off to prepare their best dishes, which staff have been invited to sample. The culinary department has come up with many fun with team building competitions such as this, that really develop leadership qualities and they provide good food, so. Every week, students and staff get together to brainstorm ideas concerning arguably the biggest things of the year, prom. Although the planning just started, an idea for a starry night theme has already surfaced. There's still a lot of time to plan since the dance isn't until May 11. But if things are already going so well, I'm sure this year will be one to remember.
Excellent. Thanks for all the updates, Brooke, Max. Any board members have any questions for either of them on their reports? A lot of good information and updates. Hearing none, thanks again. We do appreciate hearing directly from you guys as to everything that's going on at Merrill High School. On our agenda is our administrative reports. I'll turn it over to Shannon, and you'll highlight those.
First report, let's see here, is the Director of Pre-game Instruction Report, talking about our SAVO Academy work that we've done and the 100-day plans that I'm sure we keep throughout. This was shared at the CTP meeting, but Amanda Patterson is here after we answer questions for her on that. Next up would be the Director of People's Services Special Ed Report, talking about the TAA, which is behavior threat assessment and management training. That was also shared at the CTP the other night. If anyone's here and you have any questions. And MC is the Tech Systems Administrator Report. Andrew Kaler's here. His report deals with back-up boards, E-rate, securely home, and the tech director's meeting that he's been participating in, so he is here to have any questions. That one's for Andrew. Item D is Pine River School for Young Learners, monthly data enrollment numbers, USDA mail for students, P-card statements, et cetera. Mr. Martinovich is here this evening to answer your questions. Food Service Report is next with the Participation Report and the Board White. Laura's here this evening, and so here's your shot at her now that she's here. So, if you have any questions for... Item F is the Director of Business Service Report, 24 or 25 budget meetings that have been taking place, purchasing cutoffs, et cetera, et cetera. Dr. Strick is not here this evening, but I will be able to answer questions while this goes on. And then, item G is the Superintendent's Report, mostly focusing on referendum activity. We are coming down the home stretch. The election is a week from yesterday, and so we've been very, very busy this winter, as you're all aware, getting the word out and fingers crossed for the second. Couple things I'll just add that are not on my report that have come through kind of previously. Emily Bodak is a previous teacher at the high school. She was recognized as a Colfellow, which is a very prestigious award. She was recognized for that last week, we'll honor her in the board next week. But if you know Emily, she's just a top-shelf teacher, and she's an awesome person. I think most of us would agree that we're all lucky to work with her, and so that's a nice honor for her in our district. Then I also want to introduce Nick Wazalek. He's the gentleman in the back. He's our New Buildings and New Grounds Director, assuming you'll pick him in an hour and a half or an hour and a half goes. So, he's, he's been kind of, spent the last couple of days hanging around to get him to learn a few things, and he's very, he's in good shape of things, so I'm excited to have him. And he comes to us in a similar role in the city of Merrill, very highly recommended, so we're going to bring him on board. So, any questions on any of the referendum activities or any of those kinds of things? Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda is the Committee Reports. We'll start with Policy Committee. Draft minutes were attached in the February 28 Committee Meeting. Paul Prue is chair, and additional members of our Policy Committee are here for any questions for board members. Any board members have any questions for the Policy Committee? See, they did a lot of work on that call, so thanks to the committee. Get to that quarterly agreement, and he'll certainly hit you with quite a few things. Any questions for the Policy Committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Human Resources Committee attached where the draft minutes from the March 13 Committee Meeting. Ron Liberty is chair, and additional members of the Finance HR Committee are available for board member questions. Any clarifying questions from board members of the Finance Human Resources Committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to the CTP, or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, attached where the draft minutes from March 13 Committee Meeting. Paul Prue is chair, and the additional members from CTP Committee are available for board member questions. Any board members have questions for our CTP Committee members this evening? Any questions for our CTP members? Hearing none, we'll move on. Under the category unfinished business, we do have nothing categorized there right at this time, so we'll move on to Board of Education Business. We'll start with the approval of the Head Start Federal Grant. That topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Kelly Strick and Ryan Martinovich. There is a recommended motion. If we have anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Nubs?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 federal Head Start Grant.
Motion by Nubs. We have a second. Second by Jaclyn. Any discussion on this motion or topic? Any discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Head Start Five Years Strategic Goals. Topic summary sheet provided by Ryan Martinovich. There is a recommended motion. If anyone's willing to make a motion on this topic? Paul?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 federal Head Start Grant.
Next one down.
What?
Paul?
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved to approve the 2024-2025 MAPS Head Start Five Years Strategic Goals.
Thank you. Second, second by Ron. Any discussion on this motion or this topic? Any discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Head Start Cost Allocation Plan for 2024-2025, attached to the topic summary sheet. Go out there by Dr. Strick and Ryan Martinovich with the recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Ron?
I take a motion to approve the Head Start Cost Allocation Plan for 2024-2025.
Motion by Ron. We have a second. Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is approval of Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Plan for 2024-2025, attached to the topic summary sheet from Ryan Martinovich with the recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item this evening? Jaclyn?
Recommend the motion to approve the Head Start 2024-2025 TT EA Plan.
Motion by Jaclyn. We have a second. Second by Chad. You have any discussion on that motion or this topic this evening? Go ahead, Linda.
What does OHS stand for on here? So, it's funded by OHS?
Office of Head Start.
Office of Head Start. So, is this something that's coming up from the federal department for Head Start then, that we have to imply? Yes, okay. All right, thank you. That's all.
All right, any additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the 2024-2025 Merrill Adult Diploma Academy Calendar. It's the MATA calendar. Topic summary sheet was provided by Tricia Dieter. There's a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item or topic? Paul?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 Merrill Adult Diploma Academy Calendar.
You have a motion by Paul. We have a second. Second by Nubs. You have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Facilities Projects, attached to the topic summary sheet from Dr. Strick, and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion on this topic? Ron?
I take a motion to approve the Facilities Projects as presented.
A motion by Ron. We have a second. Second by Kendra. Before I go into any discussion or questions, Mr. Murray, would you just want to do a quick highlight of a couple of things where, I think there's seven items on there, and what that all looks like.
So, this, if you click that link, so these are projects that are being available for the spend-out investor funds and revenue increases that were brought about at the end of summer with the new state budget. These are different than summer maintenance projects that we've seen in the past, you know, asphalt work and some of the working projects. So, these are really different. So, Kelly, Dr. Strick, and principals got together and talked about the great pressing needs, and so you can kind of see on that list what we're looking at, whether it's high school furniture or classroom furniture at the high school, some substantial work at the LGI at the high school, furniture at Washington, and security events, and some heat controls, et cetera. So, this was a pretty thoughtful list that got a lot of input from building principals and myself and Dr. Strick, and so that's our greatest needs with that, with those ones. And it's presented in this format, so to follow the word policy, you click the links, it's all the bits and the quotes, and you follow those policies.
With that, we'll turn it to the floor for any questions or discussion. Ron?
This came about, I believe, is the extra money we received, maintenance budget was cut to the bottom for two, four years. This was the added money because of the money we received. That's where it's come from. That's a good place for it.
Okay.
Um, just to friendly edit the first tab, it says we'll be editing the board meeting. We just need to put the dollar bill from the high school tab there.
Or, yes, yeah. Linda?
Yeah, and I know, I'm pretty sure that Kelly went over this with us in the Finance HR Committee meeting as well, and I'm sure she did a really great job to explain a lot of this stuff. That being said, not saying anything bad, but with the new film coming forward, is this something that he would maybe like to look over and thoughts and ideas as well?
Yeah.
Maybe there's some things that were overlooked or not looked at quite as well or things like that major? I mean, not taking, because I thought she did fantastic last week, which explained, or two weeks ago, but was somebody kind of trying to hit the ground running? Maybe there are suggestions when you were down?
So, I appreciate that question. So, previous buildings and grounds director was involved in this process, and so certainly had all those voices in there. We are, because it's difficult, excuse me, to get contractors on a lot of things, black top, those kind of things, we will likely be rolling some money into Fund 46 to finish jobs this summer. At that time, Nick would have some say in those kind of things, although I can't imagine Nick would have liked to hear about some black top, those kinds of things. So, I do think that everybody had pretty much that.
Just asking. I mean, because I'm on a board, and maybe there's some other things that were missed in new eyes, new set of eyes. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I was going to ask the same thing with Nick coming on board, if he wanted to take a look at it for it before we approved it, but...
Is there anything you disagree with Nick on this?
Well, no, I disagree. I guess he probably come up basically, you know, he could have done this and...
Yeah, so, you know, as far as like the buildings and grounds kind of thing, the big one is the control, which is the two controls review that's got to be done to this repair. The rest of it is primarily furnishings. I put an exception to that, but so the LGI is your warehouse, has broken, many broken seats in it, so that had to be done. And then, there's just outdated furniture at Washington Library and other places, and so it's not even, as we get into our maintenance budget, I'm sure Nick would have a lot of say in the priority of those things. Because in hearing a prioritized list, and some things that have already been approved by the, by the board serving them, those things enjoy us.
Thank you, Chad. Additional questions on this motion or topic? Hearing no more, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. You have any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Food Service Project Budget Adjustment to Contract Addendum. The topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Strick. Reviewed by Finance HR Committee recommends a motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on Food Service Agenda Item? Jaclyn?
I recommend the approval of the additional expense added to the previously approved 2023-24 Food Service Contract.
Motion by Jaclyn. We have a second. Second by Kendra. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic?
I'll just...
Highlight again?
Sure. So, this was presented at HR Finance. The spirit of this is to remain competitive in the staffing, those positions, and we wanted to bring it to the end of the 2023-24 contract and make that modification now so that people recognize it as a good thing and return it to the call there. So, the 24-25 contract is a different matter, but so this is for the remainder of this summary. The funds come out of Fund 56, which there is, as you are aware, there's a balance there, which is...
All right. Thank you for the summary and review there, Shannon. Any additional questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Transportation Contract for 2024 to 2025, attached to the topic summary sheet by Dr. Strick, and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. If anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda topic? Ron?
Motion to approve a one-year contract with Lindor Bus Service for 24, 2024-2025 school.
A motion by Ron. We have a second. Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic?
Chad? Um, I missed it, otherwise I probably would have emailed this with our, so I'm sorry. Um, so, last time we did the contract, we had a pretty lengthy discussion on getting rid of the dispatch here, was that I brought up?
Um, so, those things are, that's why we did a one-year. So, we're looking at a lot of those things, including some rerouting. So, when it came to be about March, it dawned on us, we don't have a bus vendor in mind for fall, and so we talked to Dave about the potential of rerouting, working through the dispatch thing in a subsequent year, and this is just a one-year holdover for the 1% increase that we have to start with. Normally, the bus contract would be a three-year...
Yeah, so you answered my second one.
One second.
Additional questions from board members on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the 2024 Phone System Replacement. We have the topic summary sheet provided by Andrew Kaler, and this has been reviewed by both the Finance Human Resources and CTP Committees. We recommend a motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this agenda item? Paul?
I move to, I move the approval of the Heartland Court to replace our current phone system with a WebEx and Informercast system.
Motion by Paul. We have a second. Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is the Support Staff Compensation Plan. Topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Strick, then reviewed by the Finance Human Resources Committee, provided a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on that? Anyone willing to make a motion on that topic this evening? Nubs?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 Support Staff Compensation Schedule on Wage Placement for 2024-2025.
A motion by Nubs. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a second by Chad. Any question or discussion on this motion or topic? Anything you'd like to dialate on this one?
Well, yes. So I appreciate the word that Dr. Strike and principals did to make this happen. The goal is again to be competitive, you know, in the market. And I think we've got that. Feedback that we've gotten is mostly about where they're slotted. And so we'll continue to have those discussions. We also talked about moving it forward instead of percentage increases and the adoption of. So that'll be the one we'll avoid. A lot of thoughtful work going into this and I appreciate the questions.
Thank you, Shannon. Board members, any additional questions on this motion or topic? Right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
Motion carries with the noted objection. Right. Next on our agenda is Neola Volume Thirty-three, Number One Policy Update. First reading for Policy Sixty-Six-Eleven. District Supported Sponsored Student Activity Accounts. Our Policy Committee has reviewed this and made the recommendations for the boxes that are checked as you see in this draft. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Ron?
Make a motion to approve Heat Policy Sixty-Six-Eleven. District Sponsored, Supported/Sponsored Student Activity Accounts as pushed to.
A motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. Do you have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening?
Go ahead. Just so for point of clarity for the board, so student activity accounts are, fall under a whole separate governance, if you will. It's technically student money. So we have to be very careful with that. I use Brooke's cookie sale that she was talking about. So we have to have definitions. When bachelor society sells cookies, it goes in the student activity account. It's student money. And so we have to have definitions of all the balances that are carried for and those kind of things. This aligns to our practices and it aligns to legal requirements.
Thank you, Shannon. Board members, with any clarifying questions on this agenda item or this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Merrill Aqua J's Swim Team Donation. Attached is a donation form and information from Dr. Strike. Just a reminder that due to the fact that the donation is over the $2,500 limit set in Policy Seventy-Two-Thirty, the donation must come to the board separately for approval. Has been reviewed by the Finance Human Resources Committee. And they did provide a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the donation of touchpads, starter cable, hard cases for infinity starter, lane wrenches and deck cable for touchpads and push buttons valued at $3,874. We use it as a bachelor.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Do you have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. And thank you to the Merrill Aqua J's Swim Team for the gracious donation and upgrades to the facilities at the MAPS School. Next item on our agenda is the Personnel Report, which includes hirings, recruitments, resignations, retirements, all in one report. It's put together by Dr. Strike and her team. There's a recommended motion. If anyone's willing to make a motion on the topic this evening? Paul? Kendra?
Flag.
I recommend a motion to approve the attached Personnel Report, contingent upon the release of contracts for hirings and a contest action of the appropriate liquidity damages for resignations and that.
Motion by Kendra. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any questions or discussions in regards to the motion or topic? Questions or discussions in regards to the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Before we get to Consent Agenda, I'll ask if anyone, any board member would like anything pulled from the Consent Agenda to be handled separately? Any board member want anything pulled from Consent Agenda to be handled individually? Otherwise, I will ask if someone would like to make a motion for the Consent Agenda. Kendra?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through E, which include minutes from the February twenty-first, 2024, February twenty-sixth, 2026, March thirteenth, 2024, and March fourteenth, 2024, and March fourteenth, 2024 meetings. Second reading is an approval of Bylaw Zero-One Hundred Definitions, Bylaw Zero-One Twenty-Two Board Powers, Bylaw Zero-One Four-Four Point Three Conflict of Interest, Bylaw Zero-One Seven-One Point Three Clerk Policy Fifty-Three Fifty Suicide Prevention Intervention and Postvention for Death by Suicide. Policy Fifty-Five Seventeen Student Anti-Harassment Policy Sixty-Three Twenty-Five Procurement Federal Brands Funds. Policy Sixty-Six Ten Non-District Supported Student Activity Accounts. Policy Seventy-Four Forty Facility Security. Policy Seventy-Five Forty Technology. Policy Seventy-Five Forty Four Use of Social Media. Policy Eighty-Three Ten Public Records. Policy Eighty-Three Thirty Student Records. Policy Eighty-Seven Hundred Lactating Employees. Policy Ninety-One Thirty Public Requests, Suggestions or Complaints. Claims, Vouchers and Receipts totaling $3,182,695.2. Recognitions of donations received for the Greater Speaker Committee totaling $1,335 and donations totaling $5,600.
We have a motion by Kendra. Do we have a second?
One second.
Second by Chad. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Linda?
I abstain from February twenty-sixth and March fourteenth meetings.
Kendra?
I abstain from March fourteen.
I abstain from March fourteen.
Right. Motion is approved with the noted abstentions. Next on our agenda is items for future meetings. As we're aware, the purpose of this agenda item is to identify any items perhaps that we have not heard yet at committee meetings or as a board of a whole. We have been keeping a list going and checking number of them off. But at this time, I'll ask any board members if they have any items for future meetings. They want to make sure it's on the list of upcoming meetings. Any board members have any items? Otherwise, we'll continue on. We will continue on then. Thank you. Next item is just a couple of reminders. The radio schedule is more morning, approximately eight fifteen AM on Blue Jay Seven Thirty Radio Station. Shannon and I will update the community via the radio on tonight's board meeting. We'll also talk about future meetings as a reminder to the public. The Head Start Policy Council next meets on Tuesday, April ninth, five thirty PM at Pine River School for Young Learners, or CTP, Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee. Next meets on Wednesday, April tenth, at four thirty PM in the boardroom. Finance HR Committee Meeting is right after that on Wednesday, April tenth. It's no sooner than five PM here in the boardroom. Next regularly scheduled board meeting is for Wednesday, April nineteenth, five thirty PM in the boardroom. Next, we have contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under Section Nineteen Point Eight Five, Part N One, Part N F. Considering financial, medical, social or personal histories of disciplinary data, specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where Part B applies, which discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data involved in any such problems or investigations. And one eighteen point one-two-five, for the purpose of considering student early college credit and Start Now applications that may involve discussions of confidential student records and to discuss other matters involving student records, personal histories that are discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation or reputations of the person or persons discussed. Purpose of the closed session is the purpose of considering and taking action as appropriate relating to personal histories and preliminary consideration of possible policy violation or violations by one or more board members, which discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of such persons, a consideration of and possible action regarding applications for participation in the early college credit and Start College Now programs, a consideration of and possible action regarding rental requests for student opt-out of state assessments, including potential for a closed session to review the specifics applicable to the affected student or students of the discussion. Such an open session would be likely to have an adverse effect upon the reputation of such student or students pursuant to Section Nineteen Point Eight Five, Part N One, Part N F of Wisconsin statutes. Any such closed session shall be immediately followed by reconvening, opening the session for further consideration, ultimately action upon the rental request required. Anyone willing to make that motion? Paul?
So moved.
Do you have a motion? We have a roll call on.
Kendra Allison?
Aye.
Ron Lever. Jaclyn Brownler?
Aye.
Nubs Anther?
Aye.
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Linda Yingling?
Aye.
Paul Prue?
Aye.
Chad Krueger?
Aye.
Kevin Blake?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance. We're going to secure the room for.